Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
All in fav- oh, no. Board member Carrillo?
Yes.
Secretary Noble?
Yes.
Vice President Cashman?
Yes.
And the president votes yes. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Ms. Beha?
Good evening Superintendent, audience. My name is Alma Behar. I will be doing the translation services in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Alma Behar. Se gustan mis servicios. Voy a hacer las traducciones en español. Voy a estar hacia atrás. Gracias.
Thank you. That moves us to superintendent announcements.
I have a board announcement. I have a board announcement.
Board member Carrillo?
So I would just encourage everyone to be conscious of whether or not they're actually speaking into their microphone. Because I went on to look at a couple past board meetings and there are certain people that you just cannot hear because they're always, they're just not speaking into their microphones. And they're not omnidirectional mics. They're directional mics.
Are there any other board announcements? Let's move on to superintendent announcements.
Madam President, I don't have any announcements.
Is there anyone here for public forum? No one here for public forum? Okay, so then let's move on to board discussion and possible action. Superintendent?
Yes, Madam President. This is a follow-up to a board request to have Board Counsel Gino Zamora from the Ortiz-Zamora Law Firm to go over the proposed resolution presented by Board Member Carrillo to review the redlined areas you had asked for rationale for those to hear from Mr. Zamora. Also presenting this afternoon, if you have any questions, and to answer questions from the board regarding the resolution. If you have any questions, we also have our in-house General Counsel Lisa Sullivan. And then to his right is our Director of Student Wellness Sue O'Brien, who led the effort on the Code of Conduct. Also, in terms of reference materials for you are policies that might relate to said resolution, as well as a copy of the redlined resolution. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zamora.
Board President Price, Board Members Superintendent, thank you for inviting me today to present our law firm's analysis on this resolution titled today as Addressing the Hate Among Us on the Agenda. Board President Price, very briefly, I'll hit four items. Just a brief introduction to give context, a conclusion and recommendation, and then following a summary of the edits themselves, as well as line-by-line if the board wishes to go line-by-line after that point. Briefly, our law firm was retained to review the resolution concept proposed by Board Member Carrillo and to make recommendations and conduct the initial analysis and feedback. It was also to advise the Board President and Superintendent regarding titling within the agenda. And finally, to obtain and review the prepared resolution, the resolution once that was prepared and provided, which required legal research and editing. That was the entree into this through our law firm. I think it's best at this point to state a brief conclusion because I think we've all been trying to wrap our heads around the concept of this resolution and sometimes it takes a few days for an idea to digest. I think if I could summarize, the greatest concern, generally speaking, is that this should be an either-or resolution. And by that what I mean is it's either a condemnation of the actions in Charlotte, or it's a programmatic directive regarding hate and hateful activity within Santa Fe Public School District to address and provide solutions. The edits, as we get through the red line, chose between the two of those and pushed it more towards a programmatic directive. That was included in the original draft, but it highlighted more the programmatic directive of what the board could do within its district and moved a little further from the condemnation of Charlottesville because that was not all encompassing of what could take place within a school district. So the summary of the edits themselves, and then we can go line-by-line through the red line, really were to address Supreme Court rulings that affect school-based speech. It includes the concepts of students having a limited right of freedom of speech on school grounds, and that when you're regulating speech, you have to be careful of crossing over this gray line between speech that's being restricted, speech that can be restricted, versus speech that becomes political and free speech issues. Now, there are limitations on student speech in school settings. It's not as extensive as adult speech out in the general public and off of school grounds. And it also incorporates the concept that student speech can be regulated as long as it's reasonably related to legitimate educational concerns. So the edits flow from some of those Supreme Court rulings, as well as editing language that was focused on specific individuals and specific groups or organizations. In the red line, as you'll see or you've seen, a lot of that specificity was removed. And that all goes back to this either-or concept that I introduced before, in that if you're going to be highly specific as to Charlottesville and the engagement there and the specific individual names, as well as their organizations and their activities, then that would push this resolution to be a Charlottesville condemnation resolution. If it's to be a programmatic resolution that says, here's how we want to address this within our district, the concept of hate, by not picking certain hate, then you deal a bit broader. So the recommendation is not that simply that there's risk in singling out certain individuals or certain organizations. It's whether you're addressing a specific activity, Charlottesville, or general concepts within a district. So the concerns were that if you're doing a programmatic resolution, then citing individuals and organizations without a full list of hate organizations, different types of hate, different hate leaders, when you're singling out individuals, you're missing it in that you're implicitly, unintentionally but implicitly saying, these are the most important types of hate that we want to address, which leaves victims of the other types of hate out. And that's how it becomes perceived, is that they're left out. So it's an incomplete listing. There's lots of other hate that can exist, risks of hate within a school district such as sexism, misogyny, homophobia, xenophobia, and other types of anti-religious activity, acting against an individual simply based on their religion, whether that's Judaism, Catholicism, Islamic faith, et cetera. And so several of those groups, obviously, were not in this resolution, which again tended me to push it more towards a general resolution because no less list is ever comprehensive. Then, one of the concerns was that, again, if we're doing programmatic issues, only highlighting certain issues tends to say this is all the hate that's happening within our district. And so those organizations and those individuals did not engage in any activity within our school sites. So if we're including it in programmatic, it's not making sense. But if we push it over to a Charlottesville-specific condemnation, then it makes sense in that context. So ultimately, there was the recommendation that either all forms of hate should be included or a broad term of hate, a broad term for all hate should be used, especially in this programmatic context. And then finally, and I'm very grateful that we've got Sue and Lisa here also, there's also that recommendation within our advice that the resolution include a tone within it that recognizes the current programs that are in place, the current work by the district, and then how we supplement that. Again, I think this was unintentional, but when we get focused on one issue or one event and we try and merge it with programmatic, it tends to imply, unintentionally imply, that we've done nothing in this regard as a district and now we need to do something. I know that wasn't the intention, but that's how it gets read. So that's a summary of those changes. I will not go line-by-line until requested so, but I can do that at this point if you want me to do that. But the edits reflect that. What you'll see in the red line and the blue line is a couple of things. Both red line and blue line are edits by members of our office. You only see red? Okay, that's fine. Then all edits, all strike-through edits, regardless of color within those edits, are edits from our firm. Generally speaking, the third whereas that was added was really to establish a purpose, a context for a programmatic-type resolution. The edits through the next few whereases through the end of the page tend to pull out that specificity that wouldn't be appropriate, that we don't recommend is appropriate in a programmatic resolution, but would be appropriate in a Charlottesville condemnation resolution. So that would come back in and the programmatic would go out if the board chose to do a Charlottesville condemnation. Those edits continue through the second page through that first whereas, and then you'll see edits that seem a little bit inconsistent in that members of my office added, tried to add to the laundry list, well, let's add more because, again, it's too narrow. The examples are way too narrow, so let's add more. And then I came in afterwards and said, you know, that's just not working. We have to take it all out and go broader because we will always miss something. And then in the now-be-it-resolved was, you know, part of those edits that really related to the tone of the Supreme Court decisions, which is taking place on school grounds where there's a limited right of speech and at school-sponsored events. And the hate, narrowing it to the hate speech, we felt also brought it within the educational purposes and restrictions that were appropriate for school sites. So coming out with hateful statements, let's say banners with racist statements on them on a school site, generally within hate, would be able to be restricted. And so that's a summary of the background, the analysis, the strike-throughs, as well as that broad conclusion that in this resolution, we recommend a choice between a Charlottesville condemnation that can be very specific or a broader programmatic directive by the board that recognizes the current programs and then enhances what's currently being done to make sure we're meeting the needs to oppose hateful activity on our school sites.
Any questions from board members? Vice President Cashman?
I want to thank both Board Member Carrillo for bringing the original resolution and then for the Ortiz-Zamora Firm for explaining their edits to it. I'm of the leaning, which I know will make some people uncomfortable, but I'm under the leaning to go with the legal advice that we've received from the Ortiz-Zamora Law Firm, with the exception of line number 17 in the lined-out thing, if we just cross out that whereas.
I'm sorry, we don't have numbers on this one, so would you tell me?
Oh. Well, this, what?
It's a dangling whereas.
It's, whereas a Southern law-
Oh, yes, just says whereas.
Just cross that out.
Yes.
And then for me, leaning if we're going to adopt a resolution, to go with that line out, to go with that from the Ortiz-Zamora Firm.
Secretary Noble?
Thank you, Madam President. I think, you know, and I appreciate this too, which makes for a lot of interesting skimming, let's say. Pretend I read absolutely all of it because it's a significant body of work. And I guess my view is, or my question is either for Lisa or the Superintendent, what is your feeling as to whether these current policies cover the intent of this resolution? And is the resolution that we have in front of us adding to the protections that we need in the Santa Fe Public Schools?
Madam President, and I will then defer to our General Counsel. I also had a conversation with Ortiz-Zamora Law Firm, with Mr. Ortiz, who felt that our current policies cover what the intent was. That could be debated, I'm sure Mr. Carrillo has a different opinion. But if we just looked at it in terms of, with the red line out, that it does. It's part of why I also asked Ms. O'Brien to be here in terms of our Code of Conduct, that the behaviors that we're trying to limit or to eliminate are addressed in current policy. But I will defer to our General Counsel and also to Ms. O'Brien to add.
I agree with what Superintendent Garcia has said so far. I would add that as part of my legal research, I spoke with Deputy Superintendent Linda Sink about what we're doing now insofar as curriculum goes for educating students about tolerance and respectful conduct. And she advised that in grades K through eight, we have programs, including currently the Second Step Program, that require respectful conduct on the part of students towards others and for themselves. And then the Code of Conduct, in terms of its disciplinary provisions, sets the expectations for acting with respect and tolerance and in a manner that's inclusive. And that is demonstrated particularly for students in grades nine through 12. And I'd be happy to elaborate more, except that I believe this would be a great time for Sue to expand on what I've just said.
Great, thank you. Board President Price, members of the board, Superintendent Garcia. I think, I didn't see the actual document, but in our district, we actually have, so the Second Step curriculum is actually a prevention, violence prevention curriculum that we're currently using. And it's evidence-based, and that's why the Office of Student Wellness has supported it over the years. And the different units, so as the students go up in age, they have similar units of study, but they change, of course, based on the age. So it's developmentally appropriate. And within that curriculum, so it's a shared responsibility between the teachers and the school counselors, so they meet. What they're doing now is actually coming up with a calendar to determine who's going to do what part of the curriculum. And so Second Step, we're actually looking at, we're bidding right now for the curriculum, but we're talking about 25 lessons throughout the school year. And I think that's really important to mention. So for me, the Code of Conduct is at the end, like when I said at the presentation, really it's what are we doing day-to-day to help support and prevent the behaviors? So the Second Step has been in the district for many, many years. And we have schools, so we have SWAT that's happening at the middle and high school level because we do not have a curriculum, if you will, nine through 12. So really, the focus around at the high school level is really developing a culture. Excuse me, would you spell out, or not spell out, but clarify what SWAT is? Sure. Student Wellness Action Teams. And there, we actually train interns to help work with the students, and then they're at the high schools. Sometimes they're at their legislators, trying to work for, well, it's around prevention. It's all around prevention, substance and alcohol prevention, and developing a culture of respect in the schools. So within the units in the Second Step, they problem-solve, they learn about self-regulation, they learn about peer and peer pressures. So it's not really that we're teaching tolerance, because I don't think that's what we really want to teach. We're trying to teach respect for all people. And that's really what the focus is on. So I actually have the scope and sequence for you, so you can take a look at the different units in the Second Step. So that's what we do around prevention. And to me, that's key. We also just recently put together some websites and resources for the schools to use, like one of them is Facing History. So it's not so that schoolteachers can use these websites to problem-solve and do critical thinking around events that happened in history, because they happened, they're in our news. So not to be so pointed in certain instances, but how do we deal with the violence that we hear in the news? And so those are some resources I pushed out to counselors recently and principals. That was shortly after Charlottesville occurred. And then the Code of Conduct, actually, the school counselors are going to be trained on the 19th of September on restorative justice practices. I'm a firm believer, it's not just about the negative consequences, but what can we do in our schools to start, you know, framing our students' minds around doing something different? How can we give back in situations where we might have hurt and insulted someone? So that's happening, as well as other options are going to come up in restorative practices, like classroom meetings and peer panel, like we used to have. I know Aspen, so different schools are doing different things preventatively, and I just wanted to share that with you. The Aspen is implementing, and they're getting trained on, it's peers making peace. And they're really wrapping their minds around it, but they have to get trained. It's actually a very strong training component, and they actually implement it in the schools. So I think there's a lot of prevention. And I think the policies that exist, and oh, and we have in the Code of Conduct, we have places where parents can go and fill out forms, you know, if they're, if they have a complaint and/or whether it's harassment or bullying or anything. And that goes directly to the principal so that they can address the situation. So, you know, as we're moving forward and making sure we're implementing these things with fidelity, that feels really good to me. Thank you.
I also wonder, Superintendent, I think this is for you, about the practical consequences, and if there are any legal consequences for the district in practical terms with the be-it-resolved. Some of the language is fairly broad, reporting any and all instances of student and/or adult behavior related to hate and bigotry. I mean, that's very broad, in my view. And I'm pretty sure that the second be-it-further-resolved about reporting criminal activities is covered already. And then there are other things, I think I asked about before, the necessary professional development, and someone brought up, I think it was President Price, a definition of hate speech and that sort of thing. But my question is really about what you see as the practical, legal, and functionary consequences of us enacting this.
Because I'm not, what am I going to say? I feel like I'm not going to say what I normally say.
Don't say that.
I'm not going to say what I normally say. I say I practice without a license, but I'll get arrested or I'll have some, they can't disbar me, right? So, no, I'm not a lawyer, and so I can't really talk, I don't really want to give you an opinion about that, so I'm going to defer on the legality of what kind of exposure we have. So General Counsel or outside counsel?
I'll answer briefly. In this, those are good concerns to raise, of course, as part of this. I've mon- In this, those are good concerns to raise, of course, as part of this. I monitored last week's meeting and the feedback. At the same time, I also respected the finances of the district and the directive of, until today, don't engage in further work. I did, I have notes about the all instances, the professional development, condemning and not addressing, heal and transform, several concepts that I took away from that meeting. And that's why, in the introduction of my email to the superintendent that was then sent to the board, it was, this is still a work in progress. There's still more edits to be made, and also consistent with our recommendations, some of these programs that both Sue and Lisa referenced, I think there's some good stuff to be included too regarding what programs exist. And so it's a living, breathing document that still needs some edits. I appreciate a recommendation that we adopt, that the board adopt the red line version, but I will be the first to say the red line version isn't complete yet. And, you know, we could either move it, the board could either move it forward as a first reading with conditions to bring back on second reading, or could bring it back with further edits. And also, you have excellent expertise in-house. So back to conservation of resources, some of this feedback can be done in-house, and then we can collaborate.
Did your question get answered? Not sure. Because I think Ms. Sullivan, well, I think Ms. Sullivan wants to take, I think she wants to take a bite at the apple.
President Price. Was it lawyers briefly? I don't know, Gina.
Lawyer, a lawyer's political response.
President Price, members of the board, Superintendent Garcia. I could talk a little bit, and I don't want to talk all night about law stuff, because you probably have other things you enjoy more, but I can talk a little bit about free So there isn't a prohibition on hate speech in America. There is in some other countries around the world, particularly some northern European countries like Germany. And as Gina said, there are limited rights of students. However, the ACLU in particular is cognizant that we not trample on students' rights simply because they are not yet adults, and that, and we have some jurisdiction over them in local parities. There are going to be continuing challenges to school districts restriction on their speech as social media use increases ever more exponentially. We have some examples from the U.S. Supreme Court about what we can and can't do as a school district to restrict student speech. We can when, and this is an old case from 1969, we can restrict speech when it will substantially disrupt or interfere with the operation of the school or the rights of other students. The prohibition on student speech has to be on a viewpoint-neutral basis, and in fact, the Supreme Court has allowed a student, if you will, to burn a cross on a black family's lawn. And the reasoning there was, well, you could have gone after him for criminal damage to property. You can't go after him for the thinking behind the cross, which we assume was based in racism. Additional guidance from the U.S. Supreme Court suggests that schools can restrict the people who advocate drug use or other illegal conduct. A student who wanted to advertise bong hits for Jesus, for example, was restricted from doing that, because it could reasonably be viewed as promoting something illegal. There is just a lot of legal discussion.
Just real quickly, though, if New Mexico were to make marijuana use legal, we would have to put up with bong hits for Jesus?
Well, for underage.
Not for underage, okay.
Thank you. I think, I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, free speech is a big old thing in America, and that there is a lot of case law precedent around it, and this is a complex analysis. But what I, and I, what I am getting from the analysis, and I won't ask for confirmation of this, but is that we have some squirreliness in the lawyers around what we have in front of us. And honestly, that's sort of enough for me. I do want to ask Superintendent about practical consequences again. I mean, there's legal consequences, which sounds like it depends. And, you know, if you've thought at all about the practical consequences of enacting this, you can say it depends too.
I don't know, and it depends. Yeah. I mean, I think we have these things in place already. I mean, if a student were to make some sort of racist comment, or, we had a situation a while back of pretty, I think, intense drawing and racial epithet that was presented to a teacher that was intended to intimidate in some way, that there were consequences for that behavior. Worked with the families, tried to deal with this discipline in a way that also sought to find help for the student. So remember, I think you may have remembered it, but it not only involved, it was restorative justice. The consequence was related to the behavior. But not only that, the staff felt that the behavior was of a nature that the parents should be notified, and perhaps counseling might be appropriate. And so, you know, I think that, I can't say 100% that staff acts perfectly every time, but I do believe that there is a sensitivity to civil behavior and civil discourse in our schools, and that we work to uphold that standard. And so I believe that that is in place. So I don't see necessarily a practical issue, because we're already in enforcement, because I believe we already do that. I would be more concerned, I think, about the legal issue around this. And we're seeing it even, I guess I've always been a little naive about the ACLU, but they pretty much protect hate speech as well. And so, you know, it's kind of fascinating to me. But it, like you said, it is a big deal, and how we deal with it. And so I think we look at more the conduct, and what the impact and the disruption in the classroom, or that our children are intimidated or don't feel safe. I think that's the whole intent, not only our children, but the adults, because that issue that I was describing was actually intended to harass and intimidate an adult.
I'm sorry, may I speak out of turn without being asked? I might just add that there is a lot of journalistic and legal and scholarly analysis about what is hate speech, and I'm not convinced that drawing a swastika is hate speech. Hate speech may be defined as speech, or conduct, or drawings, or depictions that are likely to incite imminent violence or danger. So there may be an extra step in there as well, that would have to be policed, were there to be a reporting requirement. Thank you.
So, and while I still have...
I just briefly wanted to add to the point that the thought and the speech have, has many protections, but the actions that are carried out based on that are addressed. And those have the consequences and the ability to regulate. So violence, actual harassment, discrimination, the activities that follow up on the speech have more ability to be regulated, and, but at the same time, demonstrate a lot of the coverage that Sue mentioned and Lisa has mentioned.
And just on that point, the actions, as discussed by U.S. Supreme Court justices, are usually illegal anyway through other statutes. And in our policies, there are reporting requirements, or there's an intolerance for discrimination, whether it be by staff or students.
Thank you, that's helpful. And I guess I would also, you know, not to put you on the spot, but I think President Price can handle it. I guess, while I have the floor, I'd like to ask you, because I do really think, and this will come up again in something else I hope to bring up tonight, but that we should take the lead of those who know. And as you said at the last board meeting, you've been an African-American woman pretty much your whole life. And so I would like to just ask the direct question, what do you think the board should do on this? Or what would your recommendation be if you're, you know, the benevolent queen?
Benevolent queen. We are a board, and so what we decide here, we will decide as a board. For myself, if the board decides this is something they want to do, I will support that. I don't think this resolution is necessary. I think that we have to, one of the things that we forget here sometimes, because we're not site administrators, is that teachers and site administrators handle this almost daily sometimes, and that we have to put our trust in the superintendent and her staff, and in our policies. I think our policies deal very clearly with sexual harassment, they deal very clearly with bullying, they deal very clearly with violence against other, you know, other people. And for the most part, I'm pleased with how it's handled. As I said at the last school board meeting, I'm surprised that Martin Luther King Jr. didn't just pass a resolution, doing away with racism. I think that this is as useful as that would have been, okay? So I don't feel strongly enough about it to vote against the board, but I do want to see what we want to do, since this has been brought to our attention. I think that's fair. And this is also a very emotional thing, and it's where do each one of you feel? You know, how resolute are you about this? And do you think it's important, and why? So, does that answer you?
Yes.
I have a tendency to be straightforward.
Yes. No, thank you. Okay, I think I'm good for now.
Board member, Trigio?
I have the feeling that maybe I'm one of those people that people can't hear, so I'm going to try really hard to, yeah. I'm going to try really hard to speak up, yes. I'm so accustomed to, you know, speaking in my indoor voice. So I had every intention of bringing an alternative resolution, because I was really disturbed by what was presented at the last meeting, mostly of the information that is redlined now. And I spent a lot of time on Sunday, when I really should have been doing some other things, to try to figure out what other entities around this country have been doing in response particularly to Charlottesville. And it was kind of a mixed bag. You know, I thought, you know, because originally I tried to Google, and there's hundreds of them out there. We are not the first one, and, you know, regardless of what happens here tonight, we won't be the only or last one. These are all over the place. Predominantly, they do, though, a couple of things. One is they, the resolutions decry and say, no, we don't support this kind of behavior in our city, in our school district, in our county, in our state. There's been a state governor who has signed a resolution. The other thing that they've done, though, is they've been forwarded on to the president, and they have asked, I would say demand, but asked...
I'm sorry, the President of the United States?
Yes, that would be the one. Not you, Board President Price. Thank you. That person, like in Harry Potter, whose name shall not be said, denounce that kind of behavior at the national level. And the reason behind it, because I've read the articles that go along with it, and with the comments that are made by the public officials who have done this, and the reason being is that we've, we had a season of elections where locker room talk and, you know, a lot of different things became the norm. And to a large extent, they emboldened people who may not have been willing to act out on their thoughts in a public manner a year and a half ago, or maybe even two years ago. And so I've tried to wrap my head around, what are we trying to do with this? So I decided against, because I don't, bringing an alternative resolution that was more, brought more joy to teaching, right? Joy to the classroom. And I decided I needed to know exactly what's the intent of this. And if the intent is that we have policies that protect our students and ensure that we do have hate-free zones, because I've heard a couple of times, and I, you know, as long as I've been on this board, you've been working on the student conduct. And it has been, it's taken some great iterations, it is a really important document. And so thank you for the work that you've done on that. But we're not talking really about speech. What I think we're talking about is, you know, behavior, whether it's conduct, or speech, or whatever, you know, drawings, actions, that is intended to bully, intimidate, or harass someone. And I believe that those are already addressed by our policies. I really, truly believe that we've worked hard to ensure that our policies, that our children, and our teachers, our staff, even our contractors, who come onto our school property and do work for us, have standards that they have to adhere to. And so I'm not sure, I don't feel like this does that. I don't feel like it enhances that in any way. I also have some concerns about the report, any and all instances. It leads to, in the same respect that I think what's happened over the last year and a half, two years, has emboldened people on one, in one area, I think this kind of going the other direction of reporting any and all emboldens other people. And that makes me very nervous that we could consider what is, in many instances, and President Price is the one, you know, her voice kept echoing in my head while I'm searching the internet, is it going to stop anything? And it's not. We know that this is something that we've dealt with as a country and as a nation for hundreds of years. But criminalizing childish behavior doesn't help our students. It just doesn't. And the goal of the, say that, what's that called again? The, the program restorative justice. The goal of that, right, is to help our young people learn different skills, because we're not in the business of enhancing the birth-to-prison pipeline. We're in the goal of stopping it, and stopping the pathway that some, you know, some of our students may be on. And so... And so, there's just, there's just still so a few things. I mean, I could take it redlined, almost the way it is, without the now-be-it-resolved, report any and all instances, and the staff development, where they have to immediately report to the school site, SFPS security, and the superintendent. It just is so broad, that I think we already have that in place, and if we don't, then we should be doing more than a resolution. But I feel confident, based upon what I hear from you, and what I hear from the superintendent, that this is already happening, and that trained professionals are already ensuring that our young people are not being intimidated, or harassed, or bullied. And, you know, I will always be grateful for the former superintendent going and taking action, because my granddaughter was being teased about her curly hair. And he stepped in, and he stepped in because he knew me, right, and he knew her. She called him by his first name. That's how close of friends they were. But he stepped in, and had he not stepped in, I'm confident that, you know, once the other teachers and principal, site principal, discovered that this was happening, would have taken action, and it was remedied. And so, I do think we have more, we have more distance to go, we have more to learn. But I just, you know, if we were going to do anything, I would encourage us to adopt a resolution to encourage the president to bring in state DACA. That's, in my opinion, hate speech, you know, to go after young people who were contributing members of our society. And so, I just don't feel like this does it.
Also want to point out that those young people have given names, telephone numbers, addresses, work site, where they go to school, and so they have a hit list. Board member Trujillo?
A number of notes from what's been said, and I would start by saying that if you wanted to do with something, just the red line, I would vote against it, and I would actually withdraw the resolution, because this is milquetoast, and it's absolutely nothing what I intended it to be. And I would agree with Board Member Trujillo, that if you take the red line copy, there's no point, because it probably is all in of the other policies. So, that having been said, first off, the law firm of Ortiz and Zamora, you are board attorneys, correct? So, you're there to keep us out of trouble, have us do the right thing, but not necessarily to editorialize, or to inure, or to add, if you will, political opinion to what the board may or may not do, relative to DACA, DAPA, immigrants, this, many, many things that we've done over the last six and a half years that I've been on the board. Is that correct?
That's a bit of a broad description. Myself specifically, through the law firm, I can't speak towards the assignments to Tony, the assignments provided to me are broad. They're legal analysis, and they're legal consequences, which can affect government relations, as well as at least advising the board when they're stepping into political issues, and played a couple steps forward. But I do want to reinforce that in all instances, Ortiz and Zamora Law Firm is an advisor to the board. We do not make decisions on behalf of the board, and I please hope that you correct us if we ever direct you to do something, that is not our authority. We analyze, we advise, and we provide you with the pluses and minuses of every option, but ultimately, the decision is always the individual board members and collectively the board.
That's correct.
May I clarify on that point? If I may? May I?
Sure.
That they are also the district's attorney as well, and that actually there isn't like a board attorney and a staff attorney. I mean, that is the reality. So, they do work for us as well, they don't just work for the board. I just wanted to make that clear.
Then, no offense intended, Lisa, I have to ask, why do we have in-house counsel? I imagine it's to save money, but my understanding is, from my last six years here, that we really did have, and we can take this offline, it's not germane, a board attorney on real estate, things that we, you know, there can be instances where the district could do something, but we're vulnerable as a board, they're suing the board. So, and that's why we have, my understanding, at least from the New Mexico School Boards Association, as well as attending numerous seminars, is that we have our own counsel in situations where there might be a conflict.
Board member Price, board member Trujillo. Santa Fe Public Schools and Alamogordo Public Schools are unique. Out of all the school districts in the state, those are the only two school districts that have in-house counsel. And so, there are dual roles, there are multi-roles for your counsel. In Santa Fe Public Schools, the general counsel reports to the superintendent, and so it's very clearly an administrative counsel, but also serves the board too. And I'm sorry, I don't want to describe her role, I'll let Lisa describe her role. Let me better describe our role, which is this. We are board counsel to this board, and to 26 other, 25 other school districts. And in that role, all contracted counsel are first and foremost, contract counsel to the board. However, the board provides the authority to contract counsel, to work as a team member with the administration, and assist in the enacting of all policy and all work of the district.
No, I understand, but my point in drawing the distinction there is that should we, and this would be with instances that I described, whether it's the transgender, which by the way, you pioneered all the work, you and your, and other council throughout the state pioneered all that work.
And other people here at ZAMRA.
And then we, I don't know, was it three years ago, two years ago, we did this? But I mean, just with regards to all of that, I mean, we bring things forward sometimes that are social issues, you know, and my sense is that it keeps us out of trouble. Make sure we comply with the First Amendment, for instance. And so, and I just, I draw that distinction because we, as the board, can, they're advising us. Now, if we were doing something just horribly stupid, that we knew it'd end up in front of, somebody would sue us, well then, you know, that's our own fault. But we can, in the instance of the red line versus the other, say, you know what, this isn't, it's certainly not what I intended. I appreciate all the work you've done, but there's no way on God's green earth that I would have ever written something like this in response to what went on in Charlottesville, and how strongly I feel about the resolution that I wrote initially. That having been said, I would say within, and I want specifics, within all of this incredible pile of paper that you've given us, are the words, white nationalist or white supremacist mentioned anywhere? That's a simple yes or no, probably.
That is a no.
Great, that's all I need. And so, I would ask that within these policies, because that's something that my intention was to address, specifically those. So, you know, there's other language that I've come up with, I've dropped the term antisemitism, because you're right, there's a horrible amount of bigotry in this country against Islam. I mean, against Baha'i, against Sikhs, against, you know, anyone that might have to wear headdresses, you know? And so, I dropped that, because I don't want to, and while there's, obviously, these particular groups target Jews specifically, I don't want it to make it about Jews. And certainly not because I'm Jewish. I would ask, where in this, where in all of this, because I understand the wellness of it, the prevention of it, the wanting to teach tolerance, and just all of that stuff of it, but where in here, specifically, and I just got it all, so I haven't read it all, but I know it's not there, does it target, if you will, the intolerance and hate that I've addressed in the initial resolution?
I would never recommend that we would say white supremacist, for the reasons that I think a lot of this was redlined out, because you have to address all of them, you can't just target one, you would have to go through every single isms. And so, therefore, I would not recommend it, and I don't think our counsel would advise me to do that, but I'll defer to the counsel.
I would say it would depend, in answering what you just said, it depends on the nature of the resolution. It's-
Specific question about the code of conduct and the policies.
Well, you didn't answer it, because the specific question was where in here-
And I said it is not.
Well, it is not. Then I asked, where in here is the extent that I'm asking relative to hate, bigotry, and intolerance, where in here is that addressed? But you bring up, you bring up an interesting point about not, about there's lots of isms. There are, and it's a phrase that I will bring up later, but there's something specific, and there's a reason that the Senate, I don't know if you guys read, and if you saw it online, it'll be in tomorrow's paper, but it was online today, where the Senate voted, and they said specifically, white supremacy and white nationalism. And they said that for a reason, because white nationalists and white supremacists hate pretty much everyone. So, I mean, it's about treason, it's about forming another country for white people, it's about subjugating everyone else, okay? And that's what, and that's what makes that, to me, different, okay? And that, and so when we have a definition, as, Lorraine, you mentioned about having a definition of hate speech, right? And yes, that should be in there, and I would say that, you know, I didn't draft one myself, I think essentially it's what you just said. But I didn't draft one, because I said Gino's going to change it anyway, so he can just draft it. And he'll redline the one idea and come up with something else. I mean, the thing, well, first off, that question that I asked, where specifically in here, does it dig down deep around issues related to white supremacy, white nationalism that were addressed by the Senate today?
Board President Price-
That was where in here?
Board member Price and Board member, Board President Price and Board member Trujillo. As I started my presentation, and I've now revised this, thanks to the input from Board Member Trujillo, I said there were two types of resolutions. One was a condemnation, a Charlottesville condemnation, where probably most of the redlined issues would be appropriate in a Charlottesville condemnation, including white supremacy, Nazism, KKK, all of those terms. So, there's that one type of resolution. We condemn the actions in Charlottesville, and it should be called out. Probably 90% of what's redlined. Then there's the programmatic directive, which is, we need to do this within our district, which singling out and limiting becomes problematic, because all those groups that are not mentioned feel left out, not recognized, and it creates more issues. I'm adding a third type of resolution, which is a proclamation of who we are. This is who we are as a district. The difficulty that the resolution has, as originally drafted, is it mixes those three concepts. So, back to, what is it that the intent of the resolution is? You can't quite have them all, or you can, in three separate ways, but mixing them is creating problems. Is it a condemnation where we're singling out nominal, not nominal, but specific groups, and we're going to condemn what happened in Charlottesville? Is it, we need programmatic change within our district, or is it a proclamation of who we are? But the mixture of them creates problems, and creates issues, and creates exactly the debate you're having in this meeting. So, it, when you pick one over the other, you're going to sacrifice parts of this resolution. And the question is, which one do you want it to be?
Well, I'm not going to pick one over the other, because I disagree with you. And it's not a legal opinion that you're making, it's an opinion opinion that you're making.
It's an opinion regarding the legal consequences of blending them together. The legal consequences of identifying only certain types of hate.
Right, and there you can, that's done by wordsmithing. So, where you can be more general, so everyone feels included, so we're all being hated equally. But I mean, it does, there's nothing legally to preclude condemning what happened in Charlotte, and also then saying, okay, this is what we want to do to make sure that, you know, that our eyes and our ears are up to what may or may not be happening here. And as I said in the last meeting, very grateful, I live in Santa Fe, very grateful, and I don't mind calling that guy out, very grateful that there wasn't a tea on every lawn, you know, last, a year ago, November, okay, because in other places, there were. And so, I'm very cognizant of that. The challenge I have, and with lines such as, "Respect for all people," the challenge I have with that, we're past that in this country. Yes, we need respect for all people. I think that's a given, I think that's probably in the Old and New Testaments, I think, I mean, it's just a given in probably pretty much every piece of scripture, the due-on-to-others concept, in one way or another. And when people, and this is my understanding, when I, I mean, I support the Black Lives Matter movement, and I do it specifically, and that movement, and when somebody says, "All lives matter," clearly they don't get it. Clearly, they don't get what's happening. Of course, all lives matter. But all lives, my life, if it's after dusk, and I see a cop behind me in the rear-view mirror, I'm not fearing for my life, okay? When I'm a parent, sending a kid to high school, and they're walking, I'm not fearing for my son's life in Chicago, or DC, or Detroit, or Los Angeles, or any number of places. So, respect for all people, yeah, of course, but further. The intent of my resolution is to go further. It is to provoke, it is to, you know, it is, and there's a very intentionally belief that the words, "white supremacists" and "white nationalists" have to be there, because that's a different kind of hate, okay? Yeah, there are people that hate gays. Yeah, there are people that hate Jews, or Catholics, or anyone that's wearing headdresses, or transgenders, right? To me, white supremacy and white nationalism takes it way further. And that's why I wrote the original resolution. Agreed completely, President Price? No, it's not going to stop anything, but now there's our resolution on DACA, immigrant rights, transgender rights, or anything else. We just hope that perhaps there is a kernel of enlightenment that might enter into somebody hearing about it, or reading it, and saying, huh. And then, as I made very clear before with the last whereas in the thing that I wrote, there's 90,000 school members in the United States, representing over 100 million, you know, children and families, that's huge. And I Googled, you're right, and Board Member Trujillo's right, there's the gamut of resolutions of condemnation to, let's, you know, have enough joy that this can't exist, right? I believe you can have a little of both. I don't think they're mutually exclusive, as you do, Gino, and I don't think it opens up, and I'd be, I would want you at some point to say specifically, how? If we're not violating someone's free speech rights, if we're not violating, you know, and I understand exactly what you said, President Price, and you intervened absolutely the way I imagine you should have, when you said somebody was drawing, yeah, it was being stupid. I mean, you know, it's, no, this is different. This is not somebody, you know, just maybe bringing a pamphlet from, you know, the old Third Reich to school, or whatever, for show, it's not that. It's somebody, it's us being cognizant, teachers, parents, everyone being aware of the website, of the trail of emails, of different things that may be happening to indicate, there's a red flag here. Rather than wait for him to go shoot up a library, you know, because he's angry, why don't we intervene and seek counseling for him, or whatever? That's what this is about, and that's why I think they can be intertwined. And when I look back at resolutions that we've written in the past, there's always been a narrative, right, that followed activity or something before there were the be-it resolves. There was a narrative that led up to, and this is why we should. And that's why I think most of what was redlined, and you'll see that the, most of what, there are things that, in the copy that was redlined, that did not appear in the resolution that I presented. Because you were right, I mean, some of it was redundant, no, I didn't need to name the KKK specifically that particular way, but you're right. But I feel like it did encompass what it needed to. And I'm grateful for restorative justice and the things that we have now. But I think that, I would like to see a resolution that goes further. And I think we, that we can combine the two. If you were to accept just his redline, no point. It is in this stuff already, in one way or another. So, no point. If we want to condemn- to condemn Charlottesville, and white supremacy, and white nationalism, and basically hate speech that in all instances of student and/or adult behavior are intolerant based on gender, because it covers everything, gender, sexuality, race, and religion. I mean, we would agree probably that covers everything. Because all those different kinds of gender are included in gender, right? Everyone's included in religion with, I mean, I don't think anyone could disagree that that probably encompasses the whole kit and caboodle. So, and, yeah. Well, raised, you can say add word nationality, that's fine. And then, I think that we don't then have to have all the references to KKK, you know, neo-Nazis, and everything else. But I think it's important, at least in some place in the resolution, to single out white supremacists and white nationalists. And I, and I think that's good for now.
I just want to say, you know, this is my world, okay? I was accused of driving like grandma, because I don't speed. Why do you think that is? Why do you think that my, that I keep my registration and my insurance over my, I have a special carrier, so that if I'm stopped, I don't have to reach into the glove compartment? This is my world, okay? I take a little offense being lectured here. I feel like I'm being lectured, just a little offense. But I think Gino's points are well taken. I've already said what this board decides they want to do. But I can't live with it the way it is here, and I don't want to criminalize our children. Vice President Cashman?
I guess after hearing everyone speak, I think we should not forward any type of resolution, so not even the redlined one. I think our policies cover things. I know we are all outraged about what happened in Charlottesville, which we should be. But I don't know that us making a resolution solves the problem in Charlottesville. I'm very familiar with the two-step program that we teach our younger children, and the restorative justice. So I think our policies cover things. I'm not even in favor of a proclamation to the president. If it would make a difference, I don't believe it will make a difference. We're seeing, you know, a change in our culture, where basically, there's no civility anymore. You can say anything and do anything, and there are no consequences. So, I withdraw my support of the redline resolution. I'm not in favor of any resolution tonight.
Thank you, President Price. I guess I'm hearing pretty broad consensus that what's in front of us is not something anybody, the bringer of the resolution included, wants to move forward.
Because of redline, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
All right.
So, you know, that, to me, is relatively clear. And I guess I just want to take a moment to say, some of what has been really eating at me about this is that, and sort of heard our policies cover this, and, you know, there's quite a lot of work here in culminating all of this. And for future discussion, maybe even something I would ask to be on board discussion, but I would, I really hope we can work on how we prioritize, as a board and with the staff, what we work on and spend time on. Because I also, in the spirit of something I know a lot about, have been talking with Lisa about this broadband contract that is honestly incredibly important to the community of Santa Fe, in terms of the infrastructure that it will put in place. And, you know, not to be jealous about it, but I want more of her time and energy on that. And I, you know, I understand that we need to be able to react to things. And if we needed to address deficiencies in our policies, that would be one thing. If we felt strongly about a resolution, or something saying who we are, that would be something. And I don't know how this should work, but I really hope that we can work on, because our job as a board in making policy has to be intentional, and staff time is a finite resource. And I don't know, and maybe it's something even Board Member Carrillo could help me with, because I don't know if it's partly that, you know, in asking for a resolution around facility planning, that I don't put a timeline on it, and say, you know, two weeks, or something like that. But this has got to be a little bit of give and take. And, you know, I hope that we can prioritize work that needs to be done, because I think there's a lot of it. And the staff, I know, have a huge amount on their plates. And so, how this moves is something I've actually spent a lot of time thinking about, as, you know, this became the topic of this study session exclusively.
After Dr. Garcia, then Board Member Carrillo. I think she wants to talk to this issue.
So, I just want to clarify something. The intent was to have this follow-up discussion, as you asked, on the September nineteenth board meeting. Mr. Zamora was not available. The intent was to do Cuntera at this study session. The contract's not ready. Your resolution, we agreed, I think, at the board meeting, that we couldn't bring it back until the end of September. So we do have a timeline that is scheduled. So it's sort of collectively, you know, and how I work with the board president, in terms of the work that the board requests. But I'm really open to you all giving us direction on that. I don't have a problem with that at all. It helps prioritize our work. But had we done this on the nineteenth, we expected a robust discussion. And so, we had not intended to put very much on action or presentation on that day. So it's just sort of the way the circumstances fell out, that this wound up being in a study session.
I understand. And honestly, in any given specifics, I see the reasoning, and it's incredibly sound. I just think it is an indication for us of something that I think we really need to be thinking about. You know, you've expressed your concerns about the workload that staff have. And I think that, you know, it is, that we frankly wouldn't be doing our job as policymakers if we aren't trying to prioritize, in order to have the greatest effect on students, and the staff in the schools, and the organization ultimately, that we are tasked with the honor of stewarding. And I guess I would move that we table this resolution at this time.
Do I have a second?
I would second.
Talk into the mic, please.
Madam President, I would second it, but for purposes of process, tabling should be used to cut off conversation.
Yes. Oh, I didn't intend to stop the conversation, yeah.
And so, that's the only reason, Board Member, Secretary Noble, that I'm not speaking upright at this minute, because I did hear you say that Board Member Carrillo had something to say.
Yes. And I was, and I was going to call on him next, yeah. So, I have a motion, and I have a second, and let's continue with our discussion. Board Member Carrillo.
Well, I'd be disappointed. You know, I never in a million years thought that this resolution would generate this, or that, or all of this, and all these hours. I mean, I think I was very cognitive when I originally wrote it about free speech, very intentional about calling those people out, because they are white supremacists, and neo-Nazis, and horrible human beings on the planet. And our president's one of them. And, you know, I didn't put his name in the resolution intentionally, and on advice of council. But, you know, I think it's a missed opportunity. I mean, there are a lot of, I don't know what other, there are boards that are condemning what happened in Charlottesville. You know, what I'm hearing is, there's just not support for this, condemning it or doing anything. And, you know, if that's the case, that's the case. Win some, and you lose some.
Just for, by way of clarification, if, and I need legal help on this, if you table it, then it means we have to bring it back up again, doesn't it? No? Okay. All right. So, I have a motion, and a second. Is there any more discussion before? Yes. Board Secretary Noble?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, if there's a better procedural option, open to the-
Well, I would withdraw it. I'm sorry. I mean, I would withdraw it. I mean, clearly, the support is not there, neither for condemnation, which I think is kind of ridiculous, or the, you know, making it part of policy, or the, you know, the secondary thing you said. And but someone else, I mean, but I'm not going to support a milquetoast version of condemnation. I mean, I think in this country, we're at the point where we got to call it what it is. And it's people having been silent for generations, and allowing all this to fester around us. It's why we're at this point. Like, will we withdraw it?
Well, I think if we're going to do that, I have to ask Board Secretary Noble if she will withdraw her motion.
Yes.
Okay. And you, you're second?
Yes.
So then, you want to make a motion?
No, I'm just going to say, clearly, as there's no support for this, I withdraw the resolution.
Board Member Trujillo.
Thank you, Board President. So I just want to make it really clear, so that one of my fellow board members is not speaking on my behalf. I, at no point, at no point in my conversation, said that I do not support calling out white supremacy, neo-Nazis, Ku Klux Klan. I absolutely support calling that out, and denouncing that as being welcome in our district, or welcome in our community. So, I, it's not that there's no support for that, because I do support that. What I don't support is the way that this was written, and the intent that it is, is, or what it could, what it's trying to get to. It doesn't make sense for me. So, I would have voted to table it, but not because I don't support protecting our kids, that I don't support denouncing white supremacy, that I don't support having policies that make sure that we don't have hate behavior in our district.
I just want to add that my concern with this resolution was, and as Board Member Carrillo has said, we live in a very good city. My concern, and sometimes I think, you all think I'm a scaredy cat, but there's a reason for that. I saw this as a possibility. There are crazies out there, and that this could have been a cage rattler. And there is concern in the district, especially among secretaries, who are the front line, and meet the people, the crazies who come in, and I've had to deal with crazies, as had probably Sue O'Brien, and probably also you, you know. And it's not fun, but we do it, and we're trained to do it, as best we can. So, having said that, and I hope that's the last word, you are just going to, so I don't have to have a vote on it, you're just withdrawing your resolution. Is that correct?
It's withdrawn.
Okay. Now, is there anything on advanced planning? Yes, Vice President Cashman?
Could we just make sure on advanced planning, that we get the State of the Schools address listed there? It's the thirtieth of November, and a time, so, you know, everybody keeps on seeing that, and we make sure that we put it on our calendars. Thank you.
And that's after Thanksgiving break, correct? Yes.
November thirtieth.
Yes, November thirtieth.
I believe at 5:30.
In the convention center?
Should they not charge, pardon me?
They didn't last year, and for sure. We'll ask them again.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't charge. Anything else in advanced planning? So, before I make a motion to adjourn, oh, yes, yes.
Just on advanced planning, if you haven't registered for our regional board meeting, please call Alma or email her, and let her know that you intend to attend. The deadline is coming up.
Yeah, and she'll make, and if you want to stay down there, she'll make hotel reservations.
No, I'm talking about our-
Oh, oh, no, you're talking about ours, no, our regional one, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Because we're hosting region two.
That's right, that's right. Regional two. No, we don't need hotel rooms for that. Yes, Vice President?
And you don't need to make a change, but just in case somebody is looking at this agenda, the CRC meeting for Wednesday has been canceled.
Has been canceled, yeah.
Okay, so the nine, thirteen, seventeen, the first thing on the agenda, that's been canceled.
Okay. Any other advanced planning? Okay, before I move to ask someone to adjourn, I want to say thank you all for your, your help, and your advice, your legal advice, and your advice. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
The president also votes aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.